All right, so let's call a meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming. So I just need a motion to accept the this slate of minutes and on the public and non-public minutes of February 9th, public minutes of February 28th, and public minutes of March 2nd.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion, corrections?
One second, I have a note to myself. No, I like myself, it's all good.
Nope, so nobody has any, any corrections or discussion? So all those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, great. All right, updates on COVID-19 related items, Wayne?
So to begin with, we're in a much better place than we were last month. And last month, we were in a much better place than we were in January. We have two active cases. So we're up to 208, but over 100 of those were in January. And if you look at Cheshire County, we're now at 4% positivity rate. A month ago, we were at about 6, and two months ago, we were at 18.8. So the transmission level is much, much lower. We still have two active cases. So obviously, in our school community, there's still an issue that we're trying to pay attention to. But we're in a much, much better place, and we're going in the right direction. The one other thing we wanted to speak to, unless you have questions about our transmission rate, is our reopening plan, because we've just modified it and met with the nurses. You know, the administrators were involved as far as what we're currently doing. And I think the board's approved all of these changes. So we need to have it posted, probably an accurate reopening plan, rather than a one that doesn't reflect current status. So if you could approve it tonight, that would be great. If you want, we could bring it back again next month, but we'd have kind of an outdated plan on our website. And we have to have this plan available to the DOE too, as part of our ESER funds. One of the things the auditor will point to. So Anne, do you want to take them through any big changes that the nurses and you have come up with?
No, we just crossed out a lot of stuff that is no longer relevant, if you will. And everything, we crossed out mostly the appendices and stuff also, because they're, they're no longer relevant to the opening plan. And and then just added in to continue social distancing and, you know, just updated according to the new regulations.
So does anybody have any questions? You know, just flip through the updated reopening plan. You can see where things are highlighted and crossed off. And would have any questions for Anne or Wayne? You guys okay?
We can bring it back again next month and every month, and we could bring it back on the 22nd if you wanted. It'd be nice to get something more turned.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good idea. And also, like you said, we have the 22nd, we're gonna talk about that later. We have principal finalist interviews with the board on the 22nd. So if there's a few quick things, like, you know, we could always, you know, also talk about it then.
It'll be okay to put this up on our web, and then we'll talk about it again when we change it if we need to. But certainly, what we have now on the web doesn't reflect the
My, my only question is on page five, I see the arrival time at the elementary school has been changed from 8:15 to 8:20, which
We just had a long time ago.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, so yeah, I just wanted to
It wasn't updated from the last
The last time, yeah, okay, that's what I was gonna say. And also, you're not going earlier, so you know, it's, yeah, fine. Okay, yeah, that's what my question was gonna be. Okay, so do we need to This might
I think we do.
Yeah, and we can just look at it
As, as presented, and then we'll take, bring it back to the next agenda, and we can keep modifying it as you want.
Okay, so just need a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll make the motion.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, thanks. Okay, yellow presentation, Dan, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Dan Pedro, I'm a senior at the high school. And this year for school, I'm full-time yellow, meaning I have no classes. I have my yellow all day, every day. And what I do is, I work for my uncle's construction and carpentry business, or a building. So I've been doing along the lines of construction and carpentry half my life. So it's just a hobby of mine, and I think I would definitely recommend the yellow's to help me out a lot, more of a hands-on learner. So the, sit in school at the same desk all day. Said for my yellow project, I am building dugouts and improving the Boyd-Varstein baseball field. That's because I've been a part of the varsity team since seventh grade. And there have been countless times where dugouts sort of came in handy, whether it was weather, privacy, anything really. So I think it'd be a great improvement. Another pro is that I think if the field is improved and nicer, more people will be encouraged and excited to play. For a long time, baseball was kind of irrelevant here, and slowly, it's been coming back. So I just wanna hope, help push it back into, into the system. And with that came a lot more than just building the dugouts. I've had to fundraise quite a bit of money. My goal was 15,000 to 20,000. And right now, between money and material donations, I'm at about 11,000. That is just I, just through my Facebook page, people hearing about it by word of mouth. It's gotten pretty big. Pretty cool to be a part of. And yeah, got a fundraiser dinner on Sunday at 5:00 to help make, make up some of the money I still need. In the package I handed out, there is my flyer for my fundraiser, has most of the information that's needed. Has the blueprints of what my original plan was to help improve, and the dugout plan as well. And there is the flyer for my dinner on the back.
Any questions or comments for Dan?
Yeah, what's the timeline? I mean, are you planning to be done by the
Our first, our first game is April 11th here, and I'm starting the 22nd of March, and it'll be done before our first game.
Really?
Um, I had brought in Scott's grant
Yeah, I had forwarded
We thought that maybe that might be a little too tight to get any help, but was it?
Yeah.
Other players like helping you fundraise?
No, it's just me and my uncle mostly.
Okay. Okay, thank you. It's a great, great thing.
Thank you. If you have to get out of there, any more questions?
Anybody else? Oh, sure, definitely.
I have to remember that Dan came to you for this middle school summer project on the housing rehab.
Oh, yeah.
This is kind of exciting to see the culmination of his professional growth. I think it's really amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome, thanks for reminding us about that. We totally remembered that, yeah. Totally remember that. Cool, that's so awesome.
Can I just add one thing?
Oh, yeah.
I would just like to add that first of all, Mr. Hughes, Peter Hughes has been incredibly helpful to make this all happen. But honestly, this has been one of the biggest yellow projects we've ever had. I mean, I did, I did not know he was $11,000. So it's not, needless to say, it's pretty impressive, Dan. So, and he has really, you know, he's not in school all day. So sometimes when we want to meet with him, you know, we have to corral kids to get back here. He's been responsible, he's been respectful, he's been here on time. He's gotten everything he needs to get done, which isn't always the fun thing for them to have to do their writing and their reflection. But he's been doing him and keeping up with it, on top of doing all these other things. And he's been like confident that this is gonna all happen. So I am just blown away, impressed by this project. Nice job.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. Yeah, that's awesome. And I know we've all seen on Facebook, you know, your Facebook group and stuff. So yeah, definitely, it's, that's just awesome. No, congratulations, I think it's great.
The field is blowing the town, right?
Yep, this all got approved.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay.
December 1st, I believe.
Perfect, yeah, that's great. So that's another aspect of
Yeah, there's so many Yeah, yes.
Yeah, he's been
Yep, I got my building permit.
Oh, cool.
Great.
Yeah, so there's a whole lot of different things that go into this competencies, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, anything else? Well, thank you, this is so great, thank you so much, Dan.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, next up, we have yearbook ads. So, you know, every year, we put an ad in the yearbook. Last year, Sean had designed two ads. One for the thank teachers and staff, and one for the graduates. I neglected to get to Anne, the, the ad that we had had for years and years, just in case you want to see it next And I neglected to make copies, so if you want to take a look at it, just so you see what there was before, and then what was last year's. And we can decide, maybe Sean can maybe tweak these, these if we want to use similar. He can, you know, because he's, he's the guy to do all that. This is the one that was from, you know, all the previous years. So what do you guys think? I think, usually, we do one ad, but you know, last year, we did the, we usually do it for graduates, but we also did it for teachers and staff because of the awful COVID year, which we can continue to do, or we can go back to the, you know, the graduation, the graduates one. So whenever you guys think, spots?
I'm going to kill it on there?
Well, Sean Yeah, Sean has to update it, yeah, for the year and the names.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah. I think, I think, both people, yeah, I think so too. Okay, so yeah, so I can let Ms. Fowler already know that we'll do the same thing, but she'll get updated graphics.
I'll get it through over the weekend.
Over the weekend? Okay, cool. I will let her know that. Okay, um. Let's see, next up, discussion of school district meeting. So basically, just if we could all just take the same, you know, speaking to the same articles that we did at the forum. So April and I will do the budget. Sean will do the CBA and gym, if you could do facilities. And my, I only have two other, two other pieces, so childcare. Ms. Rich, do you know where we are with childcare?
I will be there, Mr. Benson will be there, and Ms. Burgess will be there by the time. And they have about 10 high school students who have volunteered to help out.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll have the same format, we'll start at 8:30 and hopefully run through the end of meetings and provide games, snacks, and supervision.
Okay, awesome. And if we could, you know, get that to, on, you know, publicize, so parents know.
We didn't put it in our
It has been the
newsletter, and maybe I can get Ms. Foley to put it on the digital side, just to remind people that
The childcare, yeah, and we can put it on preconnections. I'm not sure, but yeah. Okay, well, just so people know it.
What's the official time?
We'll start at 8:30 and go until
And, and the district meeting, so that's the other thing I wanted to say, because I had touched base with Matt Upton about it, because I know, I've seen it different places on the, like the flyer on the district's website says 10:30. The Sentinel advertised it as 10:30, or that the conclusion of town meeting, whichever comes first. The actual warrant says 10:30. I looked at the previous ones where we went second, and it would say 10:30, or immediately after town meeting, whichever comes first. But this year, the warrant only says 10:30, so, which means, so, you know, according to Matt Upton, and also, you know, just as we kind of know, it's noticed for 10:30. So even if town meeting finishes at 10, we should not, I mean, he said it's the moderator's call. However, if, since it's noticed for 10:30, if there was a complaint that somebody came at 10:30, and we already had like a half hour of discussion, it could, could be declared invalid meeting. So I'll just, you know, touch base with Richard in the morning and of, of the meeting. And if, you know, if he wants to call it sooner, that's his call, but you just run the risk. So, yeah, since it's, it's noticed right for 10:30, so. And who knows, I mean, you know, who knows how quickly the town will go, might end up just being a little bit of a wait time. Okay. So setting of graduation date, prom, and class trip information, so.
I hope you have So thanks to Mr. Uriel and Mr. Dupo, who did some research. So right now, 175th day will be June 13th. That would put graduation at June 18th. So those days, 14, 15, 16, 17, there's, you know, classes for seniors, we probably have nobody at graduation at that rate. So proposal is to use May 27th, which is a teacher's workshop day for the senior class trip, and to count that as an instructional day just for the seniors. So Mr. Dupo investigated this with I foresee folks, and they've given her, I guess, the, what to do, how do we do this? So that she can go into I foresee after the fact and make the notation in the grade range comment area, if she could probably explain what that is. So we include that they had a school day on the 27th just for the seniors, so we could have graduation moved to June 11th, if there were no more snow days. I know that parents and students would love to be able to do this, but again.
So, so there wouldn't be school on that day?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's the part where it lists as a workshop day for all of the students, was getting, you know, I guess that's
It's a teacher's workshop day, and if they have their class trip day, we could note it as a, an instructional day just for seniors.
So what's I foresee?
Mr. Dupo left it.
This is the place where all the data that I apply to the Department of Ed goes.
Okay.
And two years ago, they started requiring us to report the 175th day of seniors, because some school districts, I'm sure, were not going to the 175th day. So now we have to report it. So, um. A calendar is done by school, not by grade. So I have to do a calendar for the elementary school, a calendar for the middle school, and a calendar for the high school. So I can't change just one grade level and say, well, they're coming that day, and, you know, it doesn't impact the other kids. So this was their workaround with the Department of Ed, that we would continue to list the 175th day at school for the seniors as June 13th, but put this notation there that says, "They and only they, the greater 12 students attended on May 27th." And that will be enough to take care of notating that the 175 instructional days will have taken place in time for graduation.
So they're the DOE?
Yes.
Okay, so as long as the DOE is saying it, and then, okay. All right. So, but, so the teachers will still have their workshop, that workshop, okay, all right.
So did you get motion?
Yeah, I guess we have to, yeah. So, so I just want one question. So when we did the calendar last year and accepted it, obviously, we're looking at it going, okay, if we get more than two snow days, graduation's gonna be moved. So why, and I'm, I'm not against this, I'm just asking, why, when a year ago, we set the calendar, we knew the graduation would likely really be the 18th? Because honestly, you don't, you tend to get more than one snow day. Why, why are we making that change now? Like I said, I'm not against it, I'm just curious, is when we set the calendar, why didn't we, why?
I think one of the issues is, if, if the 13th is the last day, then you have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. What will we do with seniors? Because they've met their criterion, and then graduation's the 18th. I mean, all bets are off, I don't know what those kids would do.
Yeah.
So, you know, we would, we would probably have rehearsals and stuff, but we wouldn't have kids attending classes at all. Yes, the senior class. So I think it, it's kind of a gift of time, so that we can wrap things up, and then they can go on with their lives, and we don't have to monitor what they're doing.
No, yeah, absolutely.
These days.
Okay.
I'm all for it, and I will make the motion to accept this proposal.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, great, great, thank you.
Well, thank you, I think that if we have no more snow days, this is a very nice gift.
Okay.
You also have, I think, the senior trip proposal in your packet. It's right after the, it's on the backside of the And I believe we have some seniors along the line who would like to address any questions with them.
Yep, does anybody have any questions, or anybody? And I think I can see her up on there, if she wants to So they've done a lot of recent On the trip? Yeah. There you go.
Did you want to hear me talk about vaccinations or anything, the requirements?
I mean, if there's anything you want to tell us, or do you want us to just ask questions, however you want to approach it?
Um, if you guys just have questions, then you guys could ask.
Does anybody have any questions? Yeah. Yeah, looks, looks fine to me too. Does anybody, so no questions for Kayla or Ms. Rich? Okay, you got off pretty easy there, Kayla. So
Say thank you.
So I just need a a motion to approve the senior trip?
I'll make the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained? Right, thank you.
And then the last item is about prom night information on the, on the junior senior prom. And I think that's the next page in the packet.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions?
One question. Where it says prom is only open to HHS students, current students.
Correct.
Okay.
And this year, I will ask the advisors to have a piece where students indicate how they are getting home, and write down what time they leave, or cell phone number for them and their family.
Some, some double check to make sure everyone
I want to make sure everybody gets home okay.
Yeah, great, thank you.
I just have one clarification, we still, I think this may have been done before the last media
Yeah.
ended, so I think we should clarify that before it's, before it's going to approve this. Instead of making it required, make it optional.
Yes. Yeah.
Motion to that.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, so we can change that. Yeah, it's in Vermont, right? Yeah, and they, they've lifted everything too, so.
So.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. Um. And what about like the contact tracing and all that? Is that all not gonna happen too, because of, or you know what I mean, because everything's sort of getting lifted? Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, so, so like, yeah, so like the mask optional, or if you even want to mention it. And then, yeah, yeah, and then the contact tracing, you can get rid of that. Yeah, because I didn't, I didn't think most, anybody's doing that anymore. And social distancing, I mean, I know they're trying to do it in schools, but yeah, so. That kind of maybe isn't Yeah, right, yeah.
No slow dances.
Depending on the venue too, if there do have room, so yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, and the food and refreshments, yeah, because some of this is definitely prior COVID stuff. So individually wrapped stuff, that would have to, whatever with the venue, right?
Right, and I, and I know advisor Sarah Burgess is on, if you want to ask her anything.
Yeah, definitely, so should we, Sarah, did you hear Anne? So if we, the piece about the food and refreshments being individually wrapped, well, that's kind of what's from last year, with like COVID precautions.
It is, we're also doing that as a money saver.
Oh, okay.
Um, it saves us, I would say it saves us like $500 if we do it ourselves.
Oh, wow.
All right. So
To cross off for you, so.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. I think the junior class is really trying to do it as cheaply as we can, because they want to save up money for the class gift, senior year, and class trip. So they're thinking fiscally responsible.
Great, cool, thank you. All right, if, are there any more questions on that? Okay, so there are no more questions, and just need a motion to accept it as amended?
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstained? Great, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now the 2022, 2023 calendar. Whoever wants to speak to that.
I think Anne, you were probably more involved than anybody in the calendar, went to the administration group, it went to our Eastdale Federation Teacher Group. It represents the best thinking as far as coordinating with Rattleboro, even though we don't have the Career Center calendar yet, to my knowledge. But I think our parents are really, some of them are thinking ahead, actually, to vacations next year, and thinking next year will be kind of like a regular year. And so the earlier we can get this in play, I think, the better for our, for our families.
Any questions on the calendar?
How many snow days are incorporated into the actual, besides the ones at the very end? That's it.
Yeah, I don't, because they're not really incorporated, they just get stuck in as you, as we take them.
According to state law, we have to put five snow days down.
Yeah.
Then our right course
Right, yeah. Yeah, so, so would we possibly run into this same issue we just talked about with this?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And also, the main thing is, don't, don't think, graduation doesn't get set till March, so don't Oh, I know, but people are still, I, I've heard from people that, oh, but we've already booked tickets and da, 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 because we thought it was this date, or we called the school, and it was that date. So because of snow and, and the I foresee thing, Deb.
Researching for this other piece with the graduation date. The last 10 years, I've looked, and it has only been once that we've had a snow day beyond today. So I think March is a good time to make that determination, because of, I mean, a few of the years, we had zero snow days.
Yeah.
But typically, we've had snow two to sometimes six snow days. But it's usually about this time, this date, right around this week. At least the last 10 years, we've not had a snow day beyond this week.
Yeah.
Now, you know, things could change, but I, I think that's a I just jinxed it for next year.
Yeah. Yep, no, I, yeah, I, I agree, March is always a good, but, you know, like I said, a lot, oftentimes, people will just, you know, see the date and go with it. And sometimes it definitely moves, yeah, like those, when you have five or six days. All right, so if anybody has, doesn't have any other questions about the calendar? So just need a motion to accept as presented?
I'll make the motion.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, thank you. Next up, harassment and discrimination complaint form for policy AGBA EBBA.
Yeah, we, as part of our policy, which was mandated by the legislature previous year. So we had to have a policy by the end of last year, and we had indicated in the policy, and it kind of was expected, that we'd have a complaint form, but it just missed the next agenda, so we didn't really get it done. We do have a diversity committee that's working hard to kind of put our best thinking forward and stay current with some of this changing landscape. And I think this, you know, the complaint form for students, complaint form for staff, I think it represents best thinking. And so if you're okay with it, we haven't had to use it, thank goodness, but we need to have it, if somebody asks.
Does anybody have any questions about the complaint form?
I just have a couple of It's only on your flow chart, too.
You just tell us, we'll make sure
Yeah.
And we'll make sure you get that.
We should just show you.
Yeah. Is there any other questions about that? All right, so we just need a motion to accept it. Not really as amended, because we don't see the grammar pieces, but
Right, because this is the
Yeah, so
I'll make a motion to accept the form as presented.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, thank you. All right, next up is policy ACE, annual notice of contact information for the human rights officer, title nine coordinator, 504 coordinator, asylum rights.
You need to have this on in record, based, you know, federal requirements and state requirements.
Does anybody have any questions?
So my only question is to the title nine coordinator, director of human resources, we'll just update that when we get the new person?
Yeah. We have to, we have to have it done by this month, so.
Right, okay, all right, cool.
So if there's no other questions, just need a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Right, thanks. Um, okay, so then we have a final reading of that group of policies, and I'm not going to say all those alphabet soup.
I will make a motion to accept as a final reading JCA.
I will second.
The discussion about those, any questions? All right, so all those in favor approving those as a final reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstained? Thanks. And then first reading of another group of policies, if Sean wishes to say them.
Can I ask a question beforehand? I'm, I'm a little bit confused, maybe it was the way I was reading it, but it looks like, it looks like what we got was guidelines for those policies versus actual policies, or am I just not reading it right?
These are the same policies we've been getting, the same thing we've been getting from.
No, I, I know, I get that, and, and the typical stuff is highlighted, you know, what's going to change, and all of that type of thing, it just seemed like, maybe it was just, maybe I was reading it too late, but it just, it seemed like it was more like, and if you do this policy, it should be, oh, it just seemed more like guidelines than the actual policies.
Well, they're, it's the priority required by law, so you get exactly what, the only thing that we, the, the earning of high school. The IKF, they had people in our actual high school required, graduation requirements in there. Because that's what they are, they had, they had five pages of this little chart.
Yeah.
This one, that one, so we took, we took that out, because you know, you could have this, if you did this, you could have this, but this is what is in the program of studies that you moved last month.
Yep.
So that's what we put in.
That was the only question, that's probably just three hours.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, we just, yeah, need a motion.
So I'll make a motion to accept that for policies as a first reading.
Yep, and then any questions?
I have definitely a question. On the IKF, on page three or four, passage of civics exam. Do we currently do that? We currently make a citizenship aspect to for students graduating in 2024, I know.
Passed by the legislature.
So they, so they're making us do that. I really don't agree with that, just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, we have a civics class now, but yeah.
So when, when our school board, when we look at our resolutions every year, it's our opportunity to, you know, to object, but I don't think currently the legislature would give us the kind of, of earshot that we would expect, but it's a place for us to get something in play, and I know Jim and Holly recently attended the date, was there any resolution dealing with the civics exam?
I don't believe so this year, but yeah, next year, we could, we'd work with you, and we could come up with one to present.
Something passed in legislation, like when?
Two years.
Two years ago.
Or at the last session, not the current session, but previous.
I don't think it's come up in any discussion.
No, but, but.
2020, as, this probably came into effect July 1st.
Yeah, so prior to next year's NHSBA meeting, you could.
Yeah, yeah, and then.
If you go to page four, it explains where the, the stuff is.
Yeah.
So that's, I see that.
Yes.
So every school in New Hampshire, every secondary school will have to do this public school, which are private.
Yep, and I have a, I have an NHSBA meeting in two weeks, so I could see, talk to them and see if anybody, if they've had any, yeah.
I came on, like, was there, was there any pushback from any of the schools?
I don't ever remember, no, hearing any discussion at the time, do you remember hearing any discussion at the time? I don't.
I mean, I can see requiring to pass a civics class, but in order, in order to pass, in order to get to graduate, they have to pass this test, basically, which seems a little much to me.
Yeah.
If there's a kid at conference next year, you could also see, we could get on the agenda somewhere to discuss.
Oh, true, good point, yeah.
Just, I was, I'm surprised it hasn't been brought up before that.
No, I mean, I mean, it was obviously, you know, in the list of pending bills and whatever, and I can go, I can go back and see if there NHSBA had any discussion about it, but I don't remember any.
So this will be an effect for our 23, 24 year.
So the kids who are sophomores now, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But, but we have been required, Miss Chiu, who can speak to this, into I foresee, we have to let them know if our kids are passing the test. We've had to do that, I'm not sure how long.
So they take a test now, a citizenship test?
In civics. They can take the national, the US citizenship test, or they can take a district created test. And my understanding from our conversations in the past has been that Mrs. Paleretti takes portions of the citizenship test and embeds them in the, in the task. And then at the end of the year, when the students graduate, I have to report whether they have passed or not, and I don't believe I've ever reported, no.
Right.
I'm just saying.
But next year, she won't be able to do that, she'll have to.
She'll have to use the test.
In two years.
Well, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
So she will then have to teach for this test, basically. Right, am I right?
Yeah, I would think. Yeah, which is another layer, that's another way, that's not good. Yeah, teaching to specifically do a test, yeah.
Sorry, breaking up.
No, gosh, no, no, that's good, so we'll, we'll do some digging at NHSBA and see, and if we want to do a resolution about it, then certainly.
Will they, because I know, will they let, will they let individual schools amend their policies, like, I mean, I know it's law and stuff, but.
Any school can write, any board can write a resolution that will go to your annual meeting. From there, those that are passed at the, at that meeting are forwarded to the legislature, and they're sponsored by at least somebody, and they're argued then in either house or senate. And if it crosses over both, that they move up, and, and that lawless legislation has happened as a result of that. Because the biggest legislative body in the state is not our massive house, it's our school boards, and we represent everybody in, in the state. And when, you know, all the communities, almost everybody knows the school board. And I'll know their representative or their senator. So we can get a lot done, but this is an area right now that I don't think we get much progress. It's, it's just kind of a button issue, and the reason that I foresee is such a, this is just my, quickly, the reason I foresee is much, it's so important that we do everything right now. The funding is directly tied, you know, to having data membership to all of the, even how we do in our third grade ELA exam, there's money that's tied into that, so. Right now, I don't, you know, I'm not sure you get a lot of traction, but I think in a few years, you probably would, if it becomes teaching to a test that doesn't make sense for our kids, because we're all about local control. And I'm not, don't think we'd get extra money to do this, so it's extra, you know, probably, I'm not suggesting, though, that we take this one on right now, I don't think it'd be a good idea.
But as an individual, you can contact the senate.
Yeah, so there's a lot of like, there's a lot going on with like them, people trying to tell us what we can and what we shouldn't do. About truth and what's, you know, in our history and stuff, so I just want to make sure that this isn't like a step in that direction.
Yeah, yeah, so if we, when we talk, like, you know, we can do some more investigation, we can talk about it, and when it comes time for resolutions, if we want to write some kind of resolution and put it before the NHSBA annual meeting, or the delegate assembly, and then those people voting at the delegate assembly, you know, approve it as a resolution, then that directs Barrett and the people there, when they go to the legislature to advocate, don't use the word lobby, but advocate, you know, for it, or against, you know, whichever way we're going.
I would like to be educated a little bit more.
Yes, definitely, we can look into it.
You could even have Barrett maybe do a conference call or something with you guys at some point.
Yeah, I can talk to him and see if he's heard, was, he's heard about it from other places, for sure. Yeah, no, I'm sure, I'm sure there are other people out there, because there, this sample policy is coming up, so other boards are probably looking at this, too.
To get a diploma, you have to pass this test.
Yeah. Yeah, don't get the diploma, Deb.
I'm just looking up online, the School Boards Association, or opponents to this.
Oh, were they when it came up back then?
Opposition to it, because it's forcing schools to teach to the test, is what it says.
Right.
Oh, for the, for the exact reason that you are. Yeah, yeah, I don't think there was a big to do made about it, you know what I mean, so, because they will register unopposed or not, you know, the support of every bill.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, no, but yeah, so we'll definitely, I'll talk to Barrett about it, we can keep on top of it, thank you, April.
On the JLCTA, A13, I'm just curious, do we have a, it's on a creation plan? We don't currently have one. And that's something that you guys will get together and do. August first, yeah, it has to be done by August first, so the athletic director, the way you will get together, so we'll see that come.
Oh, great, thank you. So there any other discussions on that group of, of first reading? All right, so all those in favor of approving that, that group as a first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, thank you. Um, any other business? Okay.
So it's my last regular school board meeting, so thank you everybody for my, for the growth opportunities you've afforded me. I hope we keep the dog license program going. Hope somebody picks up on that and keeps that going, I think that's a really cool thing. If the warrant passes, I would propose that the school board consider having some sort of event around that. Taking some of the wood, making plaques for maybe the high scores, maybe Coach Barnett having an out, having the papers in here would be a good community thing, I think a lot of people would attend it. And I think it would be really good PR for the, for the district. And I brought this up a couple of times over the past few years, that like, I would encourage the board to consider some sort of time capsule project, very simple, down and dirty. You know, maybe in the first or second grade. Put, write a letter to themselves in 12th grade, you know, keep it in a little tote, you know, doesn't have to be that big. And then during senior week, the seniors come over to the elementary school, and then 5th grade, the 2nd grade, whoever actually presented to them. Obviously, this, this would be a program that would have to develop over a number of years, but it's just the seniors do it March anyway over there, and then they bring the, the younger kids into like presenting their time capsules to them, and then they put their box in where the seniors took theirs out, something like that. And I do know some people who do this in their district. And from what I understand, it's very popular. So I would hope the board would consider doing that. That's it.
Do you know, April? Um, I have a couple of things, so, um, on, an email went out about this, I just want to make sure, you know, it gets out in public, and we'll have to, you know, notice the meeting and post about it, so on the March 22nd at 6:00 PM, we are going to have in public interviews with the principal candidate finalists, and, you know, more information will be going out about that, they're going to have the finalists here, you know, that day, meeting with, you know, different groups. So that's being, that's being all coordinated, but then they come and, you know, one at a time, obviously, interview in public with the school board, so. That is on March 22nd at 6:00 PM. And I just want to also say congratulations to April and Gina Woodbury, who won election last night. April for three years, and Gina for two years, so congratulations. And as Jim already said, today is his last school board meeting, Jim has been on the board for nine years. I know we're all going to, I am going to miss Jim terribly. I have really enjoyed working with you, Jim, Jim's been like my NHSBA partner in crime. Yep, so go over to events over there and meet. Yeah, exactly, so, thank you, Jim, you had such great ideas, and you know, with the dog tag, and even the stuff you just said, and you've just been such an integral part of the board, so. Thank you, thank you, Jim, and if anybody else has anything to say.
Jim got me involved with my first kidder law conference, and after that, I actually attended some municipal stuff for NHMA and stuff like that, so Jim actually helped me get more involved with town stuff, so thank you very much.
I haven't worked for you for that long, but I'm sure you're on track, so, you'll be missed.
Yeah, I, I know you'll be pretty important, you already are.
Yeah, and you'll be around, Jim, we know we'll sucker you into something in a year or two of volunteering, you know, once you get a little space. Like Gina, you know, can't, you can't quit us, you just can't, right? So thank you very much, and, and Mary Ann, thank you, Mary Ann, for putting up with Jim having so many events and late nights with us. All right, before we all start crying, next up, my nan to report.
And that's going to make you stop crying.
That's a good point, yes.
Um, I, I would like to just draw your attention to what I passed out tonight, where I made some amendment to the warrant article summary that I'd like to pass out at a town meeting on Saturday. I added a chart at the bottom of the Article I operating budget, that I think spells the budget out really well. So the first column of numbers you see is our budget that was passed last year, and in that operating budget, it includes the operating budget plus the warrant article that passed as well. And then the next two columns are the school board budget and the budget committee's budget for the 22-23 school year that we'll be voting on on Saturday. I did not include the warrant articles for this year, the bleachers, or the teacher increase on the school board, and that, it's indicated by the asterix. So I think what you can see here, what I did was I took the operating budget, and then I added the grants and the food service to get to the total appropriations. Then I took out the estimated revenues and credits, which includes, by the way, the grants and the food service and other revenue streams that we have. And then I took out the amount of the state education and tax grant that we have to come up with the estimated amount of local taxes to be raised. And as you can see, the school board budget, this for 22-23, is actually $22,842 higher than last year's amount of taxes to be raised. And the budget committees is actually $24,000 less than last year. So there's a number of ways to look at our budget, and I think we, we do that, we look at it from many different angles. This is looking at what's going to come out of the taxpayers' pocket. And I think, you know, that's what, I, I know as, as myself, as being a taxpayer in town, that's one of the things that I look at, that's what means the most to me. And I think that you can see that we've been very aggressive about grants, in addition to the, the CARES and ESTR's grants that, that we've received. But we do chase every dollar, and that has led to a higher revenue stream and as keeping the taxes low, so I've included this here, I'll be putting this out, if that's okay with you, for the district meeting. But I'm, I'm hoping that, that this way of looking at it will, will help the voters in their decision making. And again, adding the bleachers will be an additional 85,000 and adding the, the teachers increases is in addition as well. So there's that. And other than that, it's been a, it's been a busy month. It's pretty much been all budgets all the time, with a little bit of grant work thrown in and, and some other stuff. And you, you have my financial reports and I'm willing to take any questions if you have any.
Can I have any questions for Jody?
Yeah, could you expand a little bit on the police share responsibility payment that was made?
So the, the one from the IRS?
Yeah.
So this is something that, that came about, I think, in the Obama administration where it was important to make health insurance affordable to employees. And we have some employees that, this is going back to 2019 now. It, it just wasn't affordable for. And so if those people go to the marketplace and take insurance from the marketplace, then there's a penalty that comes back to the employer. And, and so we had an employer, but we had a, a penalty this year for the 2019. And I think this only happens if an employee goes to the marketplace. We've not seen it since 2015. That was the last time this happened. I think that Tom O'Connor had been budgeting about this for a while because it was a concern. But then it, nothing ever happened, so they stopped budgeting. And we have not budgeted for this year, for next year. It was a little bit of a surprise, but I guess it's not really totally to be unexpected because our health insurance is not affordable for everybody. Now, we renegotiated the para contract. And that's the folks that it mostly applies to. I'm still trying to analyze it and determine if the current contract is indeed affordable. I'm not sure that it is, even though we are offering to pay a greater percentage.
So my recollection of this is that it continues to happen, that penalty goes up, right? Like if it happens again next year.
Yeah, I don't know that. I, I just pulled down the laws on it and I'm starting to, to dig into it and see what it means. I can let you know that, but that's something that.
Oh, you don't, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised.
I thought that, that, I thought there was some sort of.
Yeah.
I remember that too, Jim, but I do think we made progress with the last para contract.
Yeah.
So I think that vulnerable group that's eligible because of the hours they work, but couldn't afford, I think that we moved that up. I don't think we're going to be as vulnerable now.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be as vulnerable. And I, I dug out the 2015 penalty and it, it was pretty much the same as, as.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it happens like concurrently.
Like if you keep doing it, yeah.
Like year after year, there's a gap, I don't think, I think, but it was, it kept on getting steeper and steeper if you had that.
If you keep.
Consecutive years, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe there's something to take.
It is definitely something to think about and to know what's coming down the road at us. I mean, that's, we need to know that.
Potentially, yes.
Right, right.
Any other questions for Jody? I just want to say thank you for what you've added here because I know from when I was trying to, you know, when I was presenting about it on, at the forum. I know one of the things that I tried to explain, and I think this visualizes it right here, that the, the warrant is not the budget. So the budget is, you know, in this, in this instance, you know, like almost, you know, $2 million less than the warrant because we have, you know, so much, so much in grants. So, you know, like our budget is not 15.8 million. Our budget's, you know, $2 million, almost $2 million less, really. So.
Right.
That's a good thing to, to that, for people to visualize, yeah.
And it's, and it's really important that we include those, those appropriations because really we can't spend it if you haven't appropriated, if the voters haven't appropriated it. So it's, it's really important, even though it looks bad when that number gets bigger.
Bigger, yeah, yeah, exactly. Like, yeah, you can't spend it unless they've given you the okay to, to spend it and, but you're really not spending, you're only spending half of it with tax dollars. The other half is, you know, grants and then whatnot, but you still can't spend it unless you have that number, full number on there. So, I mean, the, you know, and it is the way the DRA has laid it out, you know, unfortunately, it's not really super clear.
In a municipal too, you can't have an expenditure without appropriation.
Yeah, and there's the same way.
And that's why we, we put stuff in as placeable for a dollar. You know, there's a dollar in there, so you can play with it, but whereas if it was zero, well, then you don't have an appropriation for it, so you can't have the.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. No, thank you. I think this will be very helpful. Thanks. Okay, um, curriculum. Any questions for Karen? I know we got to flip past all of Jody's stuff, not just Jody's. Any questions for Karen? Can you guys get there? Well, you're good.
Good.
You're good? Alright, thank you, Karen. Technology, Deb?
Thank you, madam chair. You have my report in front of you and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Deb? Yeah.
So in the middle of the report, middle-ish, talking about the new auto attendant menu, matching changes you've been making for the security changes, so for personnel, can you just tell them what those changes are?
Sure. Anytime we add another extension, which is what we did in 158 and 150B, we have to notify, it's a security issue, like safety issue, we have to notify through Comcast. I log into the account and they notify E911 when I make that change. And what I put in there is the exact location so that if somebody calls from that room, they know exactly what floor, the location, so that emergency personnel can go there.
Cool, gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Deb? Alright, thanks, Deb. Principal report?
Thank you, madam chair.
Any questions for Ann? No? Alright, thank you. Joe?
Good evening. I have my report and happy to answer questions. I would like to point out, as I hope you noticed, there is a request there that I ran through the administrative team meeting at our state team meeting last week to transfer some funds based on the S R account, S R three. Been unlucky to hire a math coach, but we have a very well qualified reading instructional coach. Is willing to stay on this year. So I'd like to have permission to be able to transfer those funds from the math instructional coach who haven't been able to find into the reading instructional coach line and continue with that person. They'd be focusing a little bit more on three, four and five. The original plan had been using K12, but we'll be moving up a little bit to kind of tighten up that grade level.
Any questions for Joe on that or anything else in his report?
Do we need to make a motion?
That's what I was just going to ask.
So we do need to approve those because it's part of the S R fund. And as you know, every month we were asked people to give us input if they have anything they want. But requests go to, we first talk to the team that kind of puts the grant together, then we go to the administrative team and then we come to the board. Board has to approve it, so a motion would be needed.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to approve that.
Any further discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor of approving the S R money move from the math to the reading instructional coach at the elementary school, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Just if there's any other questions.
Any other questions for Joe?
Thank you.
Alright, superintendent's report, Wayne?
Carry out my report. It's very good news on the COVID front, but I don't want to, you know, cavalier about it. Pretty unacceptable, but right now we're really feeling free and slow-mo smiles on students' faces these days. Karen and I, the day after we lifted the, we lifted the mask mandate, we visited almost all the classes at the elementary. Most of the students were not wearing masks, most staff are, and the high school is a real mix. But I think people are, hope was that people wouldn't be feeling uncomfortable either way. So it's a choice you could make. And we felt lost miles, a lot of active engagement, a lot of good instruction happening. I think, I think this is, people really appreciate it after two years. And I know we were in, you know, a lot of schools were not in session the last two years as nearly as much as we've been. Really proud of our staff for, for making that all work and beginning to see that maybe the spring will look like the springs of, of old in 2019 spring.
Great, any questions for Wayne?
Yeah, so I thought that the bullying at HES seemed to be a little bit of a spike. I don't know what your thoughts were on that.
Well, the principal at HES said that maybe you should go to school and get a better sense of how to interpret bullying. I think he was one of, was going to the college class, which I'm being, my, my sense of humor is not very good. That's what I'm trying, anyway, I took it as that. So I, I think we have had some incidents. I think this time of the year is probably pretty common that it goes up.
So I mean, I, I just interpreted that if a child comes or reports to their teacher that they've been bullied, bullied, then, you know, I, I call it what it is and then determine whether it's substantiated or unsubstantiated.
Right.
And, you know, some of them are, are clear cases of three students making a joke about another student. And that's when the last bullying training I went to was as soon as they say it's a joke, it's bullying, you know? That's the easy way out for the, for the bullies. And, you know, and then other, you know, just clear cases where kids just are not being, you know, it's going above and beyond being nasty. It's three to one against somebody like that. That's what it is. And sometimes unfortunately, students that have different needs don't understand right from wrong yet. And it can be interpreted as bullying, but it's maybe not bullying, it's, it's somebody lacking skills.
My contention is that Mr. Bogio has a narrow strike zone, but I think it's consistent. I'm very happy with that. He calls it as he sees it. And we're working with our SEL program very hard and we have the behavior support system going over them. So we're doing a lot there, but I think you'll talk to principals around the state and around the country. And bullying is alive and well and more frequent than ever, partially due to lockdowns. Get stuck there.
I think it's not having the same social interaction that they were before.
Yeah, it just kind of jumped out at me. And at the end, when we talk about facilities, well, when you're talking about it and the utilizing building spaces, I don't know where we are with maybe setting up, getting those bullets, people, outlets, the benches.
I'm sorry?
The benches, so I don't know if we can, if that can go through at any, at any point and then we can expand and then show as first strong interest in it. Of course, I, my idea was over here at the high school. I think if we can, you can obtain those, get those put in, I think that would help more fully utilize the building spaces and expand it to the outdoors a little bit more.
So if I, if I could just say that we're looking at infrastructure money, which should be available soon, that's separate from S R money, that we might do some of these things and certainly, you know, we can do others, but it looks like next Friday is our, well, next Friday would be our facilities meeting, but I don't know, Jim, since you will not be there, I guess.
And neither will Julie, right?
Yeah, so I don't know if we have a board member who, for Julie, maybe will be there.
Will she be back then?
Yeah. I'm not sure. The reason I brought it up is I thought maybe, maybe another board member might step up.
I, I know that Jody was going to cover the agenda that I had normally prepared. So the agenda part of it is, is covered.
Yeah, I'll take care of it, Jim.
I was trying to free up next Friday to do some other stuff with the school with one of the tailor to do website stuff and, and possibly to do manual stuff. So if I can free that up, if we're short a board member, I could step in.
You know what? If, if you think you might be on the facilities committee and you think the board will recommend you, then we can just bring that forward in the conversation, give you the minutes and move forward thinking you'll be there.
April had also expressed an interest in it. So, I mean, I'm, if I'm going to be here, I can, I don't know. So it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter to me either, whatever.
Whatever.
I know you already do a lot, so that's why I offered.
I'm actually not doing that much right now.
I jumped to the, I jumped to the April business, but I just knew we had a meeting coming up.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, yeah, because we won't reassign people until April, but yeah, I mean, whichever, I, I think it's fine, whoever wants to.
I mean, if you're going to be here already.
Just, you know, just to cover.
Right now, that's, right now, that's the plan, yeah.
So just as a point of clarification, are we talking about just the next meeting or?
Just the next meeting and then we'll, then we read.
You'll figure it out.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Wayne? And I just want to say that, you know, from everything I have just heard, you know, that, that, that people have been really respectful of people not wearing a mask, people wearing a mask because, you know, if they have a, their medical condition or people at home condition, you know what I mean? Everybody's, has been really respectful, have, you know, and taken into account that just do you, just do you. So, so that's great. That was good to hear. No, that's okay. I think, that's alright, no.
You're stewing over that, let's leave.
No, yeah, no, that's, that's alright. Did you have any?
No, I didn't have any, yes.
Hey, you know, it would not be the first time, right, Sean, we all, yeah, we all have done.
You start going on the list, like wait, you skipped one or two or three.
You know, if you put your, your check mark too soon.
Exactly.
And, you know, but yeah, so it's always good to check. Alright, committee report. So Personnel Committee, Sean is just going to speak to the article two.
I'll do that after the CBA at town meeting, district meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Health and wellness?
We haven't met since 124 and next meeting would be 321 and I think Julie will be back for that.
Uh, finance and budget. So I'll speak to warrant article one with April as, as well. And so Budget Committee, just, you know, so last night there were three seats up, two had candidates, one Lindsay did not run for her seat, so there was an open seat. So Dennis and Nadeau and Janice Nichols were elected and then Josh Green was elected as the third write-in, so. And then at our last budget meeting, they were talking about meeting earlier to, to talk, you know, Budget Committee was going to be earlier to appoint somebody to be the rep to the Finance Committee. So there was some back and forth, so like, I don't remember if it was going to be in July, some were saying August, so I, that's. Yes, but we, at first they said at town, after, right after town meeting and that, that was not agreed to by, I don't think, by many people. So, yeah, so the Budget Committee, we eat in like late July, early August, somewhere around there, and point somebody, so then as soon as we get the Finance Committee up and running, like, you know, in August or whenever we start to look at that, we'll have our budget person on there. Alright, staff development, April?
We met, we divided it up and we'll be meeting again next month to, for a different section.
Cool, master plan, yes. Thank you. Alright, legislation, NHSBA, Jim?
Well, we talked a little bit about it already, about this citizen thing. The last legislative update from NHSBA talked a little bit about Hospital 1393. It's relative to the adoption of school district budget caps. So it says the bill presented as an enabling bill would allow a district or community to enact a budget cap that adjusts the maximum bottom line budget using a formula based on, it looks like something that we might want to take a look at. What I could do is if you guys didn't see that legislative update, I can, after the meeting tonight, tomorrow morning, I can send this to you so you guys can kind of be aware of it.
Great, thank you.
Something to take a look at.
NHSBA have a meeting in, in two weeks. Alright, HASP, so we didn't meet this month, next month, right?
Right.
Selectmen, I don't think there was much. Selectmen, um, I don't think there was much going on there. I, Jim was at a meeting.
I was at one and the only thing that I had note was regarding the H R person. And there was some differing opinions about. At not not here at the district, but at the town level. Who the H R person would report to, and I think Jill and Bernie wanted it being reported to Jill. And Richard argued against that and wanted that person reporting to directly to the Selectmen. So I kind of forget the particulars and I don't have my notes on it, but I think eventually they, that Richard's. Opinion took the majority on that, so.
That's been an ongoing conversation in our subcommittee and Anne and I pretty much left that to Selectmen to let the town do what the town wants to do, let us to do what we.
Yeah, and that was said at the thing, but it there seemed to be like some difference of opinion.
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Slight.
Yes.
Some people.
All right, thank you. Um. All right, Facilities?
Facilities, yeah, so. The New Hampshire State Inspection is still. Supposed to happen this year in spring. As of three eighteen, there has been no date set yet. The window upgrade. Would probably happen this summer if it's, if we get a specific amount and it's approved by the board, so that's something that could be forthcoming. Through facilities, so just keep that in mind. Again, it's S R funding. But it's something that. Could could be proposed by the Facility Committee. You know, before the. Hopefully it is.
Facility's question. I was cleaning my desks because I have three and they're all a mess. And in some of my old papers from when I was doing facilities with you, I found a paper that said room without speakers. And I know that issue came up a couple of times and I didn't know if. That was something I should keep and give to facilities or throw away because it's been addressed or.
We still need to revisit that.
So would you like me to scan that and send it back in?
Very much.
Okay, I'll do that.
You're going to be here, right? You're going to sit in on facilities?
Oh, yeah, I got you bringing it.
Just bring it in?
Yeah. I can I can save myself two steps and just bring it in.
Two steps. The smallest journey.
There you go.
Or the longest journey.
Single step, yeah. You're getting punchy, Jim. Look at this. We're almost at the end. Are you all set?
I am, yes, that's it.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Community Connections, April?
Getting ready to do another staff spotlight. We posted up the meetings. I will post about. But yeah, I will, I will get that ready and send it to you later and.
Yeah. Okay, awesome, thank you. Tuition Committee, we don't have anything. Behavioral Support Team?
So Julia sat in for me on that meeting because I had to work. Actually, I was in force. And she's not here, so I would ask Anne or Joe maybe to speak to that.
She thought Joe was doing a fabulous job.
We kind of just followed our the usual agenda, which was updates from the elementary school, updates from the middle high school. And, you know, we, I think Julia is pleased that she sees these monthly meetings as tying the schools together. And that's obviously the whole purpose of putting them into place, so. On a good track. Eric Mann's been pretty helpful. We talked a little bit about the possibility of having Eric Mann come as a wrap-up in person if he's healthy enough to and willing. But we haven't gone any further with with that part and base program's been going well.
Well, one thing we know about base is that some kids will be very expressive in their behavior. If they're upset about something, sad, unhappy, whatever. And other kids, it's if they're very introverted and we've never been able to read people's minds. So the base program does kind of delve into some of those personal, individual kinds of questions, so things are coming up. And I think the counseling staff feel it's important to talk to kids, you know, intervention by discussion, intervention by conversation. So base will pick up what they call fire words and the counselors can see those words. I've never seen any. I don't I don't get to look at that. I wouldn't want to, but if the fire word comes up and a kid says, you know, I'm going to kill myself or I'm feeling, you know, something happened at home. Counselor knows, I got to go talk to that kid. So it's it's been helpful in that way. So some of the kids find it very too personal, too personal, but other kids, it's it's really very a useful tool. So I think back on some some of the things that we've experienced over the last few years. Some of the kids who are really introverted are the ones who have maybe some real need to express themselves. How are you feeling? And it's it's hard for some kids. So that that's a good thing about base. And I, of course, the kindness campaign is just going awesome. Some of my people volunteered to help with childcare, got a kindness coin. They were, they were like, oh, I got a coin. So I mean, it's still off and running and it's still very viable. When I looked today, saw the jars are about half full of coins just today, so it's 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 a great thing for us to be doing to looking at positive behavior. And acknowledging it.
Awesome, great. Thank you.
So that's my report.
There you go. All right, Joint Laws, we, you know, haven't had a meeting since the last time, so. All right, Susan, comments?
Chris Potts, do you have anything?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Karen Hammond?
Well, no, I'm just kidding. I'm good. I'm looking forward to Saturday and hope everything goes well.
Thank you. Donna?
I'm all set, thank you.
iPhone? Okay, I guess that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, so then we just need a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion. Yes.
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 Great. Thank you, everybody.